Welcome to the Coastside Fire Protection District Board of Directors Special Board Meeting, July 27, 2022. Simply note this is a special board meeting because it's being held at 4:00 PM, eleven on our normal 6:00 PM meeting time. Role call, please, Jean.
Board member Cockrell.
Yes.
McKinney.
Eric.
Cheryl.
Eric.
Duckman.
Here.
Oh, so I'm sorry. I didn't see you. And Burke.
Here. Dr. Stockman is on the telephone.
Thank you.
Please join me for the Pledge of Leagues.
Let me introduce you to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If any member of the public would like to make a comment, now would be the time. Please.
Good afternoon. My name is Grayson Verbano. I'm a 29-year resident of El Granada. And I'm here this evening basically.
Can I ask you to speak up just a little bit louder, please? Thank you.
My name is Grayson Verbano. I'm a 29-year resident of El Granada. And I'm here to just quickly bring up to the board that I've been working with Captain Stern about getting some lots that have been mowed annually around my house. I have four lots, and somehow they were overlooked this year. And from what I understand from Captain Stern's, there's been a lot of movement and motion going on with the transfer of information. And so I can understand how they were overlooked. Over the course of our correspondence, I lived on Lewis Avenue where the lots are now, empty lots surrounding my house. I've lived up there for the last 15 years, and every year those lots have been moved. This year, they did not move. And I brought it to his attention just before, in June, and I know he's been busy, so. So what I come here to the board tonight is to just ask because he brought it to my attention that this would probably be something that needs to be brought to the board's attention, that I was asking that the lot owners be sent their correctional pieces and said that they were as of yesterday, and that they have thirty days to comply. What I'm asking for is that if the owners don't comply, that within that thirty day time, that the lots are retroactively this year and not wait till next year.
I see.
And so Captain Stern said that we would need to get the board's concurrence.
Thank you. Chief Cox, is there any action we need to take?
No action. I'll follow up with the Farm Marshal's Office. Thanks for bringing it to us.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion on the consent calendar, please? So, and please note that Director McKinney is recusing itself of the consent calendar. Do we have a second?
A second.
We've been seconded in a discussion on the consent calendar. Role call, please, Jean.
Director Cockrell.
Yes.
Director McKinney.
Recused.
Director Cheryl.
Yes.
Dr. Stockman.
Yes.
President Burke.
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero, one. Recusal McKinney.
Continuing business. Item A, update on vegetation management action plan presentation. Captain Strong.
All right. There you go, Tyler. You just have to, the button is on the screen to advance it. Okay, you see that?
It has to be in the spot.
Just a little up right there.
There. Okay. All right. My name is Tyler Stur. I've been working with the Coastside Fire Protection District for about four years now. As an engineer, I work in all the stations here. I recently promoted as a captain in the Deputy Fire Marshal's Office here in Albion, Bayside, at Station 17. And I am now sort of the wooie captain, the wild end urban interface captain. So my job and responsibilities include taking care of all vegetation management programs, or at least being a part of them. Obviously, we've had a lot going on in the past year with Corey Park and all that stuff with the RCD, and we've been working real closely and real well with them on all these projects. But I wanted to get, present to the board to get the wheels rolling on the vegetation abatement program that we have that we started last year, which I think is going to be one of the cornerstones for, as we were talking about yesterday at the Vegetation Management Committee meeting, should be one of the cornerstones of our programs for basically managing all these empty wild lots. So, let me do again. Do you mind to have you a clip?
Yeah.
I can never see it.
No, no worries.
Thank you. That's beyond your pay grade.
It's not going at all, John. Maybe, maybe enough. I guess improve that. There we go.
Perfect. Just click to the right. Click to the right. Okay, got it. All right.
So basically, the vegetation abatement program, if you're not familiar, is we're identifying unapproved parcels, so parcels without any structures on them, which require more extensive measures than the redbaitment program that we've had here for many, many years. So large brush trees, the general vegetation that requires more heavy equipment, such as chainsaw excavators and whatnot. We have a program, and this is also important for the vegetation management action plan for this year, I believe. And there's a $400,000 allocation full asterisk. I'm not sure what that means. But this is, this will fall in line with that and help satisfy those requirements. So all these parcels pose a fire hazard to the surrounding structures and/or other vegetation in the area. And we really want to give the parcel owners a chance to abate these parcels on their own, because this is expensive work, extensive work, and time-consuming. So we also want to influence the environmentally safe abatement of these lots. So just a little, we all know we need these kind of things in the area, but this is just a local picture to help simplify that. Wild end urban interface acres that have burned over the last three or four decades, and it's just only increasing. And this is our, what we hear on the coast side. So we have both state regulation, our state responsibility area and local responsibility area. They all kind of contribute into the wild end urban interface that we have throughout the coast. And so we have, you see the red, we all know what that is, El Granada Boulevard, no secret, but it's all throughout the coast. And this, this program is focused more on more than just the El Granada area. It's the whole Montero, everywhere. So, so 2021, we basically, we, Austin Sealy, as you guys probably have been, he created a list, a master list of all the unapproved lots in the area and the whole district, and he made categories, part of one, two, and three. So very much an experimental program. He did a great job with it. And this year, we focus on the priority of one category of lots. And what we did was we sent letters to these 15 lots and hoped to get compliance. We got, I would say, a fairly good turnout with 10. And then five, we had to contract out and abate ourselves. That cost a total of just over $50,000. And these lots range from either $6,000 to $20,000 and everywhere in between per lot to abate them. So these are a couple of examples of five lots. So this is over the At Portola, on the top of just below El Granada Boulevard, kind of in the Del Monte area. And as you can see, they did, I think, really great work. This is below Lewis, I believe, in the Lewis Highland area. So you see they're spreading out the woodchips nice. They did everything perfectly. These guys that we used this year, they were very experienced. He came from Oregon initially, and his name is first rode here. So this one was a moss, a giant parcel in Moss Beach, just off Alphador by Six Center Marine. We just had them construct a fuel break through such a large property. And this goes all the way from Alphador to the top of, like, by the View Del Mar behind the hospital. So that was, that was probably the more expensive lot that they did. This is another one in the same At Portola area. Yeah. So you get the idea of what we're doing and how effective, I think, it will be. So what we want to do for 2022 this year is we want to maintain these lots that we've already mowed or cut down, and we put them on our redbaitment program. So they've already placed on the redbait approach for next year. And we want to keep going with this priority list and keep updating and reviewing this priority list based on recent status, such as the El Granada Scoping Project, which concurred with pretty much all the sites that we picked for this year to send this vegetation abatement to. And then whatever the community has to say about it, and also our experience as we go along with this program and start to learn. So also, I want to do, we want to establish timeframe. And I was talking yesterday in the meeting that I was kind of having this goal of having the six months, the first six months of the year being the redbaitment kind of time, and the last six months being like the vegetation abatement time. So we could really focus on these programs and align them, and also coordinate the partners, such as the RCD, when they do their wood chipper programs. So then we can possibly make this easier for these people to abate their parcels and encourage them and say, hey, we have this resource for you to dump your materials and hopefully encourage. So here's just a rough timeline of what I would like to see. Just basically, right now, maybe start sending out, getting a list of parcels and getting our kind of funding in order and having the board approve. I'm kind of bigger to the process of the board and the whole, what this has to go through. So this is just hyping possibly. But, and then around October, start to scout out these parcels that we sent letters to, possibly send up follow-up letters to give them another chance, and then maybe begin the contractor abating process. And then at the end of the year, December, check all the parcels and then pick out the ones that we're going to abate, could not abide by. And then by January, beginning in January, right, we're about to start the redbaitment program, we can inspect all the contract to work and get, close out the final rules. So in summer, this, I think this is going to be a paramount program that we're going to run. And I think it's going to be looked at by other jurisdictions as a very progressive thing to do. Lash's results were amazing. Both the people who complied and the contractors worked. We want to have a good timeline and a fair timeline for the citizens, and we want to target the parcels in the wild end urban interface area and as well the certain areas that we're starting to learn from these studies that we're doing. And that's quick and easy. Anyone have any questions?
Captain, just a direct question. Do we know how many parcels would talk to you about looking forward?
So I don't have that number off the top of my head. I have a whole spreadsheet, roughly. I'm going to say more, I'm going to say eighty to 100, possibly. And that's all that we've looked at so far, with, we got parameters of kind of looking at specific fire hazard severity zones, as I showed in that map, and focusing our work on those areas and our scouting. Yeah. So I would say that as of now, our list contains at least that many.
What would you consider your biggest problem in completing the plan that you have?
Completing the, all the, all the parcels, in theory. The only problem would be funding and just having the money and the resources to do it. Because one year, last year, we had 10 people comply. How does 15, maybe if we expanded to 20, and maybe that year only three people complied for whatever reason. And then we would have to shell out a lot more than $50,000. So that'd be my only concern. But the coordination, flawless coordination, I would say.
Questions?
Well. I really appreciate the before and after photographs. It really shows how effective the measures that you're taking are. We will need some more clarity on actually the numbers. You have some good numbers here. There's some very good numbers in here. How many are on the list to be done, both in the vegetation plan and the action plan itself? And we just want to make sure all those numbers match.
Absolutely.
Easy way for the public to be able to see, here are the property, here are the parcels that we have identified that need to be abated. That is a question that does come up fairly frequently.
Sure. Okay.
But I don't know now where they would come to see that list or a map with those parcels identified.
Be, be difficult, I guess, to identify every parcel, but I know, I'm sure we're probably planning another community outreach meeting as part of the vegetation management action plan. And maybe we can put together some sort of graphic, I was working with Len Erickson from the Justice Council, about having an overlay graphic map of something like that.
Okay.
Similar to that, but every actual parcel might need a little more work or time or research.
There you go.
Yeah.
Well, this is, we've moved so far forward with this in a short period of time. Congratulations. And you've also made it possible for us to keep track of our vegetation action plan. And we really truly appreciate that. And thank you so much for having the science, the foresight, and the skill that you started abating the properties that the RCD study identified as the critical ones before that study was even done.
I got to give that credit to Captain Austin Sealy. He's the one who took this program and ran with it and did, allowed this, made a nice easy 15-minute presentation and keep going forward with it. So, but it's the work of everyone here and the community as well. So.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah. Recently, one of our meetings, going back a few months now, we had a citizen come on the meeting, this, back when we did Zoom meetings, who was extremely distraught about some sensitive habitat where he was concerned that we had either ruined it or were in the process of ruining it. And it came down pretty hard on us with this, essentially, intimated that because of the way we paid the contractors, he was looking for more work and was cutting stuff that wasn't necessary. Informally, I asked, I asked our, our contract guy, who does all the plans and does a lot of fire finishing work, and he said, we had nothing to do with it. I was not aware of that. And that, in fact, had been paid for and done by some local residents there. And, yeah, we took the fall for it. And the guy was extremely upset with the board, for those of you that were on the meeting and called. And I don't know how we keep this from happening again in the future. What happens if some low-meaning group of citizens decides to redebate some area we aren't checking with anybody?
Yeah, they're dealing with that right now with the city. And we just, we've established really good communication with the city of Happen Bay, with, I talked to Joe Butcher directly, who went out and met at that site, actually, one of those sites.
They're running for me with that.
Yeah, yeah. And it's basically about communication with us, the city, and establishing a trust. And we were going to be, the city down, here's what we're mowing, and here's what we're doing, cross-layered with any of their protected areas, which we had maps of, but they, they kind of continue to identify more areas. So we want to make sure every year that we're with that. And so we know that we're not mowing those lots, and they know we're not mowing those lots. And as far as the contractor goes, I don't, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah.
I haven't heard of the contractor going out of his way before, but yeah.
Other questions? Comments?
Nicely done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Y'all, continuing business, update on fire station 44 replacement feasibility. Chief Cox.
Yeah. Give me one sec to IT this a little bit. Okay. The, kind of to set the context on this, last month, we got the report back from the architects about the actual program for the new station 44, the proposed 44. And that was a result of last year's RFP from On Hall Architecture and Hearing Firm to actually see the feasibility of replacing Station 44 on the site. So we're still in the feasibility phase of the, the current site. Like, if you look at the documents that are in front of you, we've had several meetings with the architecture firm, and a couple options have come up. And I will actually start with option number two. And essentially, what the architect has, has established is the facility is going to need to be two stories to meet the demands of what the square footage is. And the idea of getting a drive-through apparatus bay is really the hang-up right now with the decision point. So, and option number two, it is feasible to put a double-deep apparatus bay, basically 80-foot-deep apparatus bay at that site with a two-story construction. However, that current turning radius in the back, you will see on the turning radius side, is extremely tight. It's inviting a lot of accidents. And, and, and it doesn't give the, the operators much room to actually pull the apparatus onto the front apron to do their morning check. So it's, it's not an ideal setup. It's feasible, but not ideal. Option three, which was what they call the Texas style, I thought, certainly appreciate that, which is you put the apparatus bay up front, and you kind of turn it 90 degrees to what the traditional way is. It would also fit, but it would also be tight to the turning radius. It also pushes all of the facilities to the back of the lot. And so the community has to go around all the operational equipment to actually get to the facility itself. So not an ideal setup. The most logical setup that they have come up with as far as the feasibility is concerned is option number one. And what option number one does is it actually, it goes, instead of two 80-plus-foot apparatus bays, it goes to three 65-foot-deep apparatus bays. And what that does is that allows you to have your primary apparatus, your reserve apparatus, plus the patrol and the utility, which are all the apparatus that are assigned there, and also allows for, in the future, if a quint is placed there, it allows that up to 65-foot length. That also improves the turning radius and all that, and gives the operators the ability to pull the apparatus out on, on, even, and do their morning checkouts. So this is just a very rough overview. This is the second phase of the feasibility. The square footage was phase one. This is really just looking at the feasibility of having that square footage on the site with a drive-through option. It checks all those boxes of a 65-foot-length apparatus bay, three wide. No actions required, but this is really to inform you on your decision-making for the future as to whether to go to the design-build phase, about whether it's feasible.
Was there discussion on how much dirt we can take out of there?
Yes.
I think that was an issue, possibly.
Yeah. So what the architect and the specialist who looked at fire stations was anticipating, they were looking at somewhere between four to six feet of removal of the height of the current station.
Sure.
Which brings it down a little bit.
Yeah, that's perfect.
What's the timing of the next step?
So really, the next step is, the feasibility, this really concludes the feasibility portion. The next step is really the more traditional path of going to a design-build phase. Or what we have budgeted next year is at least the design phase of a replacement facility.
Okay.
So may I infer then, from looking at this, that this will be, once again, a drive-through or this will be a back-in?
This will be a drive-through. Option, option one is a drive-through.
Oh.
Which it is. It is. Yeah. So since they shortened the bays from 80 feet down to 65, it is feasible to have a drive-through.
We didn't make the turning radius.
And, yeah. And their second recommendation is, although it's not on here, because we had a fall conversation on it, is to make the rear apparatus bay, the first two apparatus bays, one door, and not have a pillar in the middle, so that you actually have much more swing to pull in that.
And then where do the employees park?
Yeah. So what they have not put on here is where the designated spots will be.
Down the street on Stetson.
They'll most likely be up against the structure, allowing that apparatus to have the wide turn.
Okay.
So the form giver here is the drive-through.
Yes.
Capacity.
Yeah.
And, and as I look at this, is sound also formed over here? Because if you take a look at the second floor, right, imposed on the top.
Yep.
The, the dorm rooms, the places where firefighters would rest.
Yeah.
Are as far away from, they, from the apparatus bays as they can be.
Yeah.
Although the day room and the kitchen are both up against the apparatus bay, second, fourth, where. Is, so that, is that a function of sound? Is that where they would be on the interior?
You know, I, that's a great question as far as why they, why they decided to put one on one side and one on the other. I would, I would assume that there is a rhyme or reason to it. And I don't know whether it's windows and air and circulation for, for, for buildings or not.
Right.
But they usually have a rhyme or reason. Remember, this is very preliminary when they do these layouts, because they're just looking at, is the, are the numbers going to fit on a lot?
Sure.
This square footage.
Windows are good. Your ocean's not far away from there.
Right. And so, and this, the second floor would just be a giant shed roof?
Yeah. So, as far as, the second floor would be above the offices and community room. The apparatus bay would be also too high.
Right, just higher.
Yeah, just, and it would be a void space in there.
Okay.
Kind of like how it's pretty noise.
Okay.
So the kitchen's on the second floor.
Yep.
That means a lot of hauling things up and down.
Yes.
It's about as far away from the stairs and the elevators as one can get.
Yep.
But hauling is good. Is that the concept?
It's a short haul.
Where are you looking? The pole holes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the poles, well, you know, this is obviously not schematically correct. It's just programmatic. You know, the poles will be somewhere along the, where the living space meets the apparatus bay, or some sort of overhang onto the apparatus.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Wouldn't make sense.
Cool. Of the three, this really did seem to be the cleanest option, to give the engines the best clearance to drive through.
Yeah. Yeah.
Chief, good progress. Well, I, I'm sure I echo the other board members. I'd like to see it go as fast as possible. Obviously, there's a lot of things to be done and all that type of thing. But as we're looking at a number of other things besides this, including inflation and costs, it would be nice to have something as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Good progress. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
New business. Resolution, find the meeting of the Board of Directors via teleconcy to protect against the ongoing health and safety risks posed by COVID-19, determining that all such meetings will continue to be held in ivory form while attendants in person are remotely to government code section 54953E. And chief, I think this, we understand what's going on here. So let me just make a motion to adopt resolution 202250 of the Board to continue hybrid meetings. Second move and second discussion. Role call, please, Jean.
Director Cockrell.
Yes.
Director McKinney.
Yes.
Director Cheryl.
Yes.
Director Stockman.
Yes.
President Burke.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero. Thank you.
New business. Item A, review and discuss UPI long-term liability report, Chief Cox.
Thank you. This actually is a little bit late to the full board. This was the report that was provided on May 25th to the Finance Committee. This was the staff report that was the basis for the presentation from the consultant, who has been looking at the CalPERS unfunded liability. I would just call out, you know, the, the kind of gist of all this is the recommendations at the end. And it's, it varies everything from paying off the full liability to establishing a 115 or to make additional discretionary payments. But this is really just information only for the full board.
The, just, I believe I said this at the time, that there's a good innovation here for us and where we stand relative to CalPERS. But however, based upon what's going on with Station 44 and other financial matters, we're just going to hold this in the balance till, at least until we get the new budget and see where we're going. Then bring it back for possible action or possibly no action. Okay?
And the shark fin. Shark. And then to avoid the shark fin, you do the first, shark fin, which is a concept that they introduced in here.
Oh, yes.
And then to avoid that, we have fresh start. That is our concept.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Moving on then. Let's see. I am seeing the new business. Consideration approval, resolution of online release of request or proposal for landscape services, Chief Cox.
Thank you. Last year, you remember, the board put out a contract for a landscape architect to do an updated landscape design for essentially all of the Main Street-facing and Higgins Canyon-facing portion of Station 44 here. The idea was to tie into some of the new entryway vegetation themes that are going on inside there. The consultant or the person who we hired completed the work, had several meetings with her, you know, met the requirements of low water, localized plants that match the surrounding environment. That set of plans has come back. And what we are, would like to pursue is actually putting out a RFP to see what the cost would be for a contractor to actually get on to do more. It's essentially an update to the landscape around Station 44.
Before we, just to have any questions, available for food resolution 2022. Before we, just to have any questions, uh, available for food resolution two thousand twenty-two, debt fifty-one. Presence of the board authorizing a release of, of request for proposals.
Second.
Move to the second discussion. How big a deal was this?
I, I don't know, because I, I tend to think things aren't as a big a deal as when they turn out to be a bigger deal. Um, I'll, I'll be really interested to see what the bids are and what people come back with.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they, they, that it would go just from in front of this and along Higgins Canyon.
Yeah, exactly. So it would be pulling out some of the, the, the plants that are big. Going onto the sidewalk, you know, putting in some rock, you know, making it a, a little bit, a little bit more presentable on, on the street.
Probably have the irrigation system, so that's good.
Yeah.
Questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, question from Steve. Is um, is there, is, are we able to encourage local contractors to make a bid proposal? In other words, I think sometimes in government, you're, you're limited to who responds. And sometimes that's a limited amount of bids. Is it appropriate to contact your local landscapers to see if they have interest?
Yeah, Gina, I know the procurement policy is pretty specific on how we advertise RFPs. Do you, you know about local?
You can advertise, but you can also do additional outreach if you think that would promote uh, getting more responses. Not a problem with that.
Yeah.
I think that's worth the effort. I think, uh, at least to see what local costs come in for. I think it's an appropriate thing to do.
Yeah, sounds good, Steve.
Chief, I think what you're saying is whatever effort you could make to engage local contractors would be. Decided.
Sure.
Okay. We have a motion. If any other comments, we have a motion, a second roll call please, Jean.
Director Stock, Cockrell. Director McKinney.
Yes.
Director Sheryl.
Yes.
Director Stockman.
Yes.
President Burke.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero. Thank you.
Move on to new business, item D, weed abatement, Chief Cox.
Thank you. This is uh, the billings for the weed abatement program. Uh, this is the fifty-four parcels that did not comply with the abatement of weeds in the um, abatement timeframe of the district outline. And will be the required funding that the district will outlay to mitigate those lots in which um, will be reimbursed during the tax roll process next year.
Do we know, uh, so this is fifty-four properties out of how many that actually comply?
Uh, I don't have that number, but it's significantly more than fifty-four. That's a pretty wide number.
Good, good. And as we look at these numbers, it averages out to a thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars per parcel. But some of these are substantially larger. There's an eighteen thousand dollar bill on here.
Yep.
Those situations tend to be no one did anything about their property for years or it's just, it's that severe situation.
Yeah, so, and Tyler can chime in too. It's usually a factor of how much vegetation they're taking out simply, right? And if that, if they haven't been doing it over the years and, and they're being required to now, it can be a substantial number.
And size of parcel too.
Size of parcel. Are there means or ways for private property owners who receive a bill like this to seek some sort of aid or abatement, uh, you know, uh, some sort of relief or?
As part of assisting in, in, um, for funds to, so they can do it on their own. Uh, not that, not that I know that would be above I, my level of knowledge.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve resolution number two twenty-two dash fifty-two?
So.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Roll call please, Jean.
Director Cockrell.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Sheryl.
Yes.
Stockman.
Yes.
President Burke.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, five zero. Thank you.
Move on to uh, item E, review and discuss uh, district operating plans, Chief Cox.
Thank you. This um, is up to the seven-year operating plan that was formulated uh, in conjunction with the updated contracts several years ago.
Yes.
Uh, really just bring it before the board, uh, to kind of do a check-in, answering questions, um, see, see if there's any pivot to me to make and kind of also have the lens of this was completed pre-COVID and we've lived through two and a half years of COVID and that was not factored into, to this plan. I think it's important to also highlight.
The, the, I had, I'd spoken to Chief Cox to bring this forward, to just to put it on the board, just to get it in front of us to uh, ensure that we, we, the board members have a good appreciation of what we're contracting with Cal Fire as well as having a community. Uh, this is, I'm sure you would agree, is a very thorough uh, operating plan. Uh, and I think that uh, one of the things that I think it reminds us is that, is, it reminds me of our duties recently compared to what Cal Fire has to be set up. And we have some very specific responsibilities which are called out in this program and, you know, all the things that, for example, we own the equipment, and we own the facilities, we do the strategic plan, we do the policies, the basic things to do. But the list of items that the, that Cal Fire has committed to do and which is doing uh, an outstanding job. I, I, at least, uh, if I reviewed this, it was very impressive. But I assume you think it's healthy to take a look at this and remind everybody, including the community, of what our relevant rules are and how we're addressing. Up editorial comment, any other comments that we could add some? If not.
It's just a fire station forty-one is no longer under construction.
Yeah.
And I would echo your praise of this report. It's thorough, it's informative. It's something that more people in our community might benefit from understanding more clearly.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of understanding how we fulfilled all of these X's and the Y's, that it's going to take a little more time to review those things, I, I suppose. The maps are wonderful. Um, it does say that we're a fifty-square mile community with thirty thousand people. We just finished this redistricting thing with twenty-four thousand people.
Yeah.
Is there a reason for the population difference to be?
So I, I think um, I think this was going off the pre-census information.
Absolutely, it was, right.
So I, you know, I'm not an expert on that. After going through the districting process, I am not an expert on that census issue. Uh, I think that, you know, is a, a generalization. I also think when you account for, um, you know, the tourist numbers, number of train teams coming through here, that you get a much larger number than the actual.
I didn't below.
Yeah.
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 Right. So that was just, because I always thought that twenty-four thousand was less.
Yeah, I think it is.
So.
I think the thirty thousand is low, which is just a very subjective comment.
So as we look at these very high severity maps, maps are beautiful. Um, it does cover fire hazard and severity zones in the SRA. It does cover, this is two thousand and seven. There's a little more uh, high severity area than in the, the map before it, which is the very high severity variant. Have these maps changed significantly since two thousand and seven?
Well, funny you should mention that. It's a really hot topic right now, the whole fire mapping. There's two things to realize. That, one of these maps is the LRA and one of these maps is the SRA. They're two separate maps.
Okay.
So the SRA maps should be forthcoming by the end of this year. And those maps are fairly indisputable because the state is identifying state land that it believes is high or very high fire hazards. So not usually controversial because there's, there's far less um, kind of adoption in it. The LRA maps, which are going to affect El Granada, they're going to affect Captain Bay. And they're going to affect portions of, of Moss Beach and Montero because that's local responsibility area. Those maps will come out after the SRA maps.
Okay.
And those maps have to be adopted by the jurisdiction, either the county or the city in this case, and have implications for building construction, land use and whatnot. So just asterisk on this topic, a lot more to come, could be fairly controversial moving forward based on changes that usually affect.
It would be good at some point to translate when the new maps are out, the impact by community name. Because we've, we focused a great deal and rightfully so on our concerns for El Granada. But we also do have concerns for other areas and, and if we look at these maps, it's, it's every community, it's every neighborhood that borders those, the ridgeline.
Yeah, 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 I understand.
My understanding, the reason for El Granada taking so much interest is the ingress, egress situation in the event of a major fire.
Yeah. And you know, the thing to always remember about ha, fire hazards, severity zones, it's, it's rating hazard, it's not rating risk. And risk and hazard are two very different things. So there may be a high hazard, high risk area, there may be a high hazard, low risk area. And those, those, that's sometimes a little nuanced that people um, can kind of get.
So hazard is basically fire load.
Yeah, it's things like fuels, topography, weather patterns. Yeah, yeah. Risk is things like ingress, egress.
Yeah.
Can I get out?
Yeah, thank you. Good point.
Okay.
Uh, the, the only other thing I'd mention on this is the apparatus replacement plan is not up to date in, in here because we have since updated that since this plan.
We might even expand the search section.
Yes. All right, nothing, no questions. Uh, moving on to item F, consideration of editorial resolution authorizing on the board or director regular monthly meetings, beginning at four P M on the fourth Wednesday of these months, Chief Cox.
Yeah, this um, was an idea that we put out there. Um, the board policy has, I believe, Jean Kirk, if I'm wrong, has to actually identify the sign.
Correct.
So it sounds like we have um, a unanimous agreement that a earlier start time, four P M, would be beneficial.
Do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash fifty-three? So.
Second.
Move to second. I, I just noted, at one time in the past, the board tried to change um, meetings of, of one time, that time we were having at seven and tried to move it to five. There was a, an eruption. Really, because he felt that it was, uh, because of the work schedule, they could not get here. However, with the zoom of, of opportunity, I don't think that's a factor. Or I think this is certainly a hell of a more convenient for staff as well as the, the whole to deal with. Any other comments to the motion and a second roll call please, Jean.
Director Cockrell.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Sheryl. Stockman.
Steve.
Director Stockman.
We might have lost him. I don't see a picture of the telephone.
Yeah.
And Pres, President Burke.
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero, one. Absent Doctor, Director Stock.
I'm back on right now. I don't know if that matters.
Moving on to item G, consideration approval resolution authorization, direct deposit for board of directors and authorized check signatures for coast side fire protection district, Chief Cox.
Thank you. This is a really a formality to ensure that all the board members can uh, sign checks, be authorized signature. Um, designated signature persons as well as allow for direct deposit for board members.
First of all, do I have a motion to approve resolution number two twenty-two dash fifty-four?
Yes.
Second, move to second. Uh, I just had a comment, I spoke to Chief Cox about this. So we tried to do direct deposit of the directors' checks at some point in the past. And the question of getting two signatures of approval before they were deposited became somewhat of a, apparently not a policy issue, but a uh, a, a audit issue. And I've asked the chief to check on that, so that even though we're approving this, if we approve it, uh, I still would like to have that worked into to make sure that we get these approved. Okay. With that, the roll call please, Jean.
Director Cockrell.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Sheryl.
Yes.
Stockman.
Yes.
President Burke.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
We on to the board of directors, chief reports, finance committee reports. Uh, we do not have the spreadsheet available uh, this evening for the complete year. We will have it available uh, for the public and for the board at our next meeting. Uh, however, the, oh, you have a lot of them on it. First of all, there is, it is a very positive financial report, both in terms of uh, controlling expenses as well as revenue. So I'm very positive that I'm not concerned at all regarding that report when I see the final one. Uh, the, the only other item is, and I'm not sure whether you are going to mention it or not, but I'll do it, Chief. The, we do have the PAS report in our packet. And uh, I, I call your attention because of the so-called, what depending on which view you take, whether in a recession, a depression, or rollback, or whatever we're in at the point, uh, is that we have two documents in our packet. One is the month of June in which our uh, we had a decline of some two thousand, uh, two hundred thousand dollars in our uh, PAS uh, count. And then the second document is really the year-long document that shows the beginning value as of seven, one, two thousand twenty-one, the four million five hundred thousand, and then the ending balance. Both these documents, the ending balance is three point seven million dollars. Uh, I definitely was just interested to add one other item to this report, just to, if we, during, by the way, just to back up a moment. In the year, uh, we have, we'll have a painful loss of about half a million dollars in this account. Uh, which is again, good, but given the status of the financial markets, I don't think it's unusual. And to buttress that comment, I just pointed out to you that in the last three months, uh, latest three months, I should say, our PAS account uh, has declined ten percent. In six months, it's gone down fifteen percent. In one year, it has gone down thirteen percent. And in three years, we are plus four percent. Five years were plus six percent and the ten-year period is eight percent that were there over that period of time. So I think that's a very positive uh, figure that they've been able to achieve. And I think you had also mentioned that, if you remember, I think it was two weeks ago, we changed our asset allocation, I think, from seventy thirty to fifty fifty to be in a much more conservative position. And it's certainly not to be overlooked at all, but if you look at the, the, the entire year, this account has, uh, we have distributed out this count two hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars uh, for our previous employees' healthcare. And that did not differ from our current budget. So that is a major improvement to, an asset to be able to do that. Nothing on PAS, any questions on finance? And JB, do you have it?
None.
And we, we will have our new uh, budget for the year in September. We'll follow to that to see how that's going to affect us. The volunteer committee, JB.
Just a, um, a busy morning, yeah, the volunteer meeting, as per usual, we're still on the. The seventh. Yeah, actually, we have about eleven or twelve people in attendance, it's very good. They discussed all of businesses and then they had the, uh, discussed the volunteer radios and some fundraisers that the, uh, that the five oh one C three had had. And I'm not getting into that, I don't think that's really important, uh, so far as, uh, what they're doing with the five oh one C three. They're having extensive training, which is what they do quite a bit of, which makes them more valuable to the, to the district. And they're doing some training on the bleeding, in the block there was asthma. That was done after the week after our, our meeting. One of the volunteers has recently gone to work for South City Fire Department. And then that concludes the regular meeting. And after the meeting, there was a badge presentation. And one of the things that I noticed is they, every volunteer essentially gets two badges. I, I, it was never explained to me, I didn't get a chance to ask them why they're getting two different badges. Uh, I'm, I'm assuming the one was for the volunteer for the five oh one C three and the other one was for the coast side volunteers. So I found that very. So I found that very interesting. I stayed with the badge presentation.
Both badges to say?
I didn't get a close look at them. I'm sorry to say. And uh, and they adjourned at at seven fifty. This is prior to the badge presentation. The badge numbers are all relatively low. Um, the first was twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And the coast side badge is six, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Those are the badge numbers. Very interesting. And that's the sum total voluntary report.
Very good.
And their current, just for the information, the the current cash balance they have. Is two hundred and one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars plus they had a large amount of cash on hand which had yet to be counted. This had to do with some of their fundraisers.
Yeah, and that that fund balance has nothing to do.
Nothing to do with offsets. This is why I choose by the.
Thank you, J B. That is it. Land and structures committee report. Director Parker and Bruce, do you have any further? Vegetation management committee report. Is it going to be Director Stockman? Steve?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, I'm a little challenged here just with and I'd like to ask. Keith Cox and and Director Cheryl, if they just summarize our meeting of yesterday in regards to the wildland resiliency scoping. You know, just do a brief summary.
Uh, sure. Uh, I think, uh, you know, to kind of set the context of it, last year, the board supervisors with R C D. Sent out an R F P for a scoping project to look at um identifying potential projects around Al Granada. To reduce the potential fire paths in the community. That was a group of agencies led by R C D of which Coastside Fire, County Fire, Cal Fire. All three fire agencies were a part. As partners. Fast forward to this final report, uh, the consultant has come back with a report of seventeen priority projects. In and around Al Granada. Uh, it should be noted, almost all of this area is outside of the fire district. Uh, only a small piece of it is actually within Coastside Fire Protection District. And and it really just lays out the seventeen projects that that they recommend um doing to reduce fire risk. I will say, one, it's not going to stop a large fire from coming into Al Granada, even if all this work was to be done. Large offshore wind events with a going fire can push embers miles. So we we've kind of from the beginning, from the fire perspective. Reaffirmed over and over again, although these projects are important and reduce the risk, they don't stop the actual potential of a fire thing. Uh, the other piece of this is um, uh, really what we're hearing a lot about right now. And we talked about the vegetation management committee is. What what it what's next? How does this all get implemented? Uh, it's very important from the district's perspective that we talked about our responsibilities that we fulfill as the district here are. Um, we do defensible space inspections, we do the weed abatement program, and we do the vegetation management. We are also a partner with R C D as they seek funding for doing these larger projects in and around the community. So I think that's just important context setting. Um, and we also discussed a little bit about um how this report plays into. The Fire Marshal's Office. Expansion of the vegetation management uh program and where they focus um additional lot clearance within the district. Um, and speaking with the R C D uh director yesterday, we'll continue to be a partner with them as they seek funding to do this work. Um, and really, uh, you know, we'll we'll stay by their side and in communication. This board does not. Or this document does not, A, recommend that the board do anything differently and B, uh, does not tell us. Um, that we are deficient anywhere. This is really looking at future projects and a tool for getting funding for future projects. Uh, in that in that area around.
It was an excellent meeting to understand what the parameters are that the Coastside Fire Protection District is responsible for. In relation to this study. And what it revealed, uh, as we've already said, is that there was. Uh, already in play um through our Fire Marshal's Office. Litigation for some of the parcels of the head of the Deer Creek Drainage, which is the number one. Uh, project identified in this study is having the most, it's having the highest potential for impact. On the El Granada community. Would that be a correct statement?
Yeah.
Okay, so we were uh pleased to see that the. If there was an indication that we could re-prioritize perhaps some of the parcels that we are responsible for. That are adjacent to the drainage. Um, that's a minor adjustment on our part because these parcels that needed to be mitigated. We're going to be, we're going to be looked at anyway. And if the landowners do it, great. And if they don't, then they're on the. List to be done and then assigned through the tax laws. So. Our immediate actions are modern in response to the study. However, as you indicated, Chief Cox, we will continue to be good partners. As the community looks at what they want, their priorities and next steps to be and how they plan to go about funding. These various abatement projects. There's a lot going on right now there already. We are. Uh, there's a lot that forestry is doing, the state and county park system, um, through Rich Sampson and Sarah.
Colmer.
Colmer. In terms of grant writing and finding funding for them. So there's a very active multi-agency. Uh, group with the R C D working to be sure that the concerns are addressed. But like you said, it doesn't keep the tree hanging.
Yeah, and I and I think kind of one thing to always reaffirm is the Coastside Fire District. Cannot go and do one of these projects tomorrow. And that's really important messaging for the community. Because vegetation management, A, is the responsibility of the landowner. And B, as the district, we can only abate uh unimproved parcels in those residential areas within within the district. Or within a hundred feet of the structure. So. I I know I know a lot of um supporters out there to try to get as much work done as quickly as possible. That is. What everyone wants. However, it does not fall to the district to go in and do any of these seventeen. We're there to be a partner to R C D and FireSafe that help them get the funding and and regulatory requirements clear to get the work done.
How much of this work could be done using inmates?
Well, our constant shortage of inmates is really the big hindrance right now. There's not that much availability. Where we used to have five crews out of Ben Lomond Camp in Santa Cruz County, there's only two right now. It's two like of the minimum. Number of folks and we don't see really a change in that anytime soon. Just to the, just due to the inmate population available. So that that's why they're they're it's getting harder and harder.
And that part is expensive, wait.
Oh, it was a great resource for a long time. At two hundred and fifty dollars a day for a crew, we had a lot of work done with them. But now they're the. The waiting list is a mile long to be able to get those crews out on continents, unfortunately.
Steve, did you have anything to add?
No, I'd just like to uh voice appreciation of both Chief Cox and Cynthia for that report was very transparent. Very honest about the conditions and the responsibility of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Also to Captain uh Sturm and Captain Sealy for their excellent participation in all of this. We really appreciate it.
You know, I I just, first of all, I. I'm pleased that, you know, the the impact of this document, as far as I know, is not going to change anything that we're doing. And the the other aspect of it is reading, and maybe I've read too many of these things, but uh. You know, there's no light bulb that one ought to need that said, you know, this is something really, really to change and do differently that is really. All that different. It's basic. Items that I'm sure the fire service and the students has known for some period of time. I guess I I would, and I know there's been some meetings and I have. Ended them. I certainly hope that there's no. Too weighted to community and citizens' expectations that something different and remarkable is going to happen. That would prevent the possibility of fire simply because of what's been identified in this. Because, you know, I think whenever there's something like this comes forward, they say, okay, boy, just do this and everything's going to be terrific. And as I think you indicated, that's not going to be the case. There's too many variables and too many unknowns that are going to go with this. It's a good effort and I don't mean to be negative about it, but anyway, that's my comment. Anything else? Steve, anything else? Okay. All right, A L S, wait a minute, Specialist District Association, no report. Item F, A L S J P A, no report. Which preparedness, Director Cheryl?
The emergency preparedness group meets tomorrow. So every time we have a board meeting, it's the next day for the previous month. So. This report would be a month old. But last month, the big hot topic was the Edgewood Fire. Um, and the response to it and everyone was just. Uh, praising the multi-agency effort and the communications around that. Uh, they said it was a difficult fire in a tough spot and there was another fire across the the freeway apparently. And what did it wind up being? Seven alarms?
Yeah, over seven.
Over seven, seventy-nine, whatever. And that. Uh, no one ever wants to see a fire this close, but it was handled as well as it could possibly have been. And you in particular, Chief Cox, were called out. That's uh your your work as P I O was just outstanding. So. Thank you very much. And as I recall, you were P I O on that fire and then you sat down and went through. A line-by-line twelve million dollar budget. And then the next day, you gave a great send-off for Chief Casgrave. So all of that was just. Uh, amazing. I believe that's the order of events. I mean, that's.
I can't remember that part.
Yeah. So, uh, the other, the other thing that was of concern continues to be, uh, is the S M C alert system. And as we discussed yesterday, there is an override. You don't have to opt into everything. There is an override. Where, but in the override uh mode, everyone in the whole area gets a notice to evacuate and that may not be the message that wants to be sent. So. Our very own Chief Casgrave is now at the, is now at D E M and his assignment is now. That system, the first alert system. So I anticipate that he'll get that straight now. Difficult. That's a good assignment for him to take on. Um, so that's it for emergency preparedness. Those are the two topics. First alert and. S M C alert and the.
I received two tests today. S M C alert, one via text message and one via email. As did my wife.
Do you want to continue on if you're doing that search?
Move to search. Um, we're seeing new activity in three neighborhoods, downtown Hefen Bay, Pillars Cedars Park, and Sea Haven. Very grateful these neighborhoods are self-organizing and getting their own safety networks together. Uh, we had an event that you referred to, um, Director Cockrell, uh, which was our advanced cert training for. Field first aid. It was led by Chief Casgrave and and there were stations all around uh F forty where people practiced. Splinting and vanishing and turn, using tourniquets and all kinds of different field first aid. Practices and the volunteer firefighters were instructors and our aides as we practiced. And we had forty-five people there. And it was very well received and we're very grateful for that support. The next day, we had, uh, in this room, a multi-agency training for HAM and F R S radio. That included the large animal evacuation group and the cert group and the amateur, Hefen Bay amateur radio club. So what they're doing is preparing to support each other in these efforts that involve uh emergency response to multi-agency events. We're very grateful. The certs had a good showing at the Chiefs and Penning ceremony, which we all truly appreciate. Thank you so much. For planning that. It was magnificent and for your words. President Burke did such a beautiful job of summoning all of us. So thank you. And who can forget the donation? So. Um, that is the cert report. Thank you very much.
Before we let the cert thing die, I'd like to comment a very nice event that she hosted. Down there at that cowboy ranch in the, it couldn't have been nicer. I went and still enjoyed the whole thing. I've never been there before. For those of you who haven't been there, it's like stepping into a. Wild West movie set. Very interesting. I spoke with the owner and got the history of a lot of the stuff that was in there, including. The craps table came from the Tommy Village, which is the interesting part of this. I may have shot craps back in nineteen fifty.
Thank you so much, Director. We really appreciate you coming. It was an outstanding event. It was, people were so enthusiastic. The cert program basically. So enthusiastic to appreciate the chief who has not only served for thirty-two years in fire services, but. Twenty-three years as the head of the cert, as program manager and lead instructor. And they brought their, you know, were usually pretty buttoned down. But they brought their families and there were no green vests in sight and music was great, the bar was really good. And and it was a beautiful setting. So we are. The chief's whole family was there, his old friends, you know, and it just meant a lot to the organization to get to say thank you.
I got to sit at the power table with Chief West and the proof mentioned forty.
That was totally cool that they came, the volunteers were there. It was just fun.
Sounds like a great time. Moving on, attorney's report, Jean.
Nothing, thank you.
Uh, we have fire marshals report.
We don't care if it's out this week.
Okay, uh, fire chief report, Chief Cox.
Yeah, uh, just a few things. COVID, no staffing impacts right now. Uh, employees are still conducting the self-testing. So, um, the department provides the materials, they self-test. Um, on the management admin side. Really, the big piece was this R C D report and following up with partners for questions that have come out. As far as personnel, uh, two of our fire apparatus engineer paramedics this last week have been offered promotions to fire captain paramedics. That's the good news. The bad news is it's in the county fire. Yeah, so they'll be over the hill. Um, but it's good news for them and we will be filling those engineer positions behind them. They will, they won't be, they'll still be able to work overtime over here and and work in their um previous stations. Uh, we did conduct interviews for the division chief of operations. Uh, we anticipate making an offer in near future. And share that news um with you on the next meeting. Um, as far as um information and outreach, um, our. Um, K I O is participating in the disaster day this Saturday, the county sponsored disaster day at the event center in San Mateo. Um, and we will also be sending out a flyer to all of the community, all of the addresses in the district. Um, encouraging people to sign up to Community Connect and Community Connect is the online tool. That allows you as a citizen or homeowner to provide information about your um home that you would want first responders to know about. Um, and that could be you have a dog, you have a cat, you have an elderly person living with you. Um, that information is now, our crews can actually see what you put in from the fire engine when they look at your address. So it's a direct communication from you to the firefighters who's responding to your house. Uh, operations-wise, no calls for service. Um, state operations, I think Chief Armstrong has been. Working very hard on the state budget that's been released, which has had kind of a big impact on our department and the state side. Um, and on the training side, we received the drones, the three drones are in our possession now. And training starts tomorrow. Chief Lore with some people, vendors actually coming in to do the training. So. Um, we'll get those in the sky shortly. Uh, no report for prevention facilities. The cameras are in here now. As you're walking down the hallway, you'll see your cameras. They're actually set up for security. The crews next door have the ability to see what's going on around the station. I will say, unfortunately, um, kind of some of our fears of the old station forty-one, we've had, we found graffiti on the station. Um, we got the sheriff's office involved, um, to see if it was gang-related and our our battalion chief is working um with the. Um we got the sheriff's office involved um to see if it was gang related and our our battalion chief is working um with the. The shift sergeant right now on following up with that. Uh we are going to paint over it once the sheriff's done with our investigation, but I think it's just a little bit of a. A reminder that we have a a non-occupied facility that um that is right for that. Uh as far as apparatus, all the apparatus are in service. Uh the new battalion chief's vehicle is in service as well as the new division chief's vehicle. The final battalion chief vehicle is being outfitted right now. Um the new ERV Polaris is in the apparatus bay. If you want to see it, it's the ERV off-road vehicles. Yeah, it uh it needs to get outfitted with radios and mics and all that, but it's delivered. And um good news, the first. Two of our four engines have gone into production appears finally, so uh twelve weeks from now, we should be having, um I think it's Chief West and Captain McTime going back to Wisconsin to actually do the. Um the uh final line. Um then we will have the third of the type ones starting in New Year and then we will have the type three.
Very good.
In America.
Well, I had nothing until Jonathan mentioned the state, but I'll I'll keep it really short um because it might not have directional impact to um. Coastside, but there are indirect, I guess, things. Um fifteen hundred positions is what's given to the department over the next few, to CAL FIRE on the state side. Out of the current budget, which is about fifteen percent of the entire department's size right now. So pretty, it's a good problem to have, but it's going to be a significant lift adding all those folks in over the next few years. Think that the indirect uh kind of benefit of that is obviously the depth of resources and you know, kind of uh. What's the, what's the word I'm looking for? Economies of scale that I can have. So it is, as we get those, it kind of will help kind of ease the workload across all of our folks. One major uh benefit to San Mateo County and Coastside is Old Glenwood Camp in La Honda. Is going to become a hand crew center for CAL FIRE. So we're going to have two firefighter, one hand crews out of there. It's uh starting, funding wise, it'll be funded as of January twenty twenty three. It's going to be a very busy six months getting there. So, but it's going to be a big benefit to have two hand crews in San Mateo County nine months out of it. Great.
So they will be stationed and trained there, is that what you?
Correct.
And then available any place in the state?
Correct. So it's all part of that, you know, we had that long, it was talking about the inmate population being way down earlier. We used to have a hundred and ninety six funded hand crews throughout it through that agreement with CDCR. A few years ago, it went down to like a hundred and fifty four, I think it is. Um because they closed some of the camps, but that hundred and fifty four funded crews in any given time, we only have like. Four actually filled out in state. So they've started to do these partnerships with California Conservation Corps, National Guard, firefighter ones, our our own firefighter ones. Just to get those numbers back up. So the point being, yeah, they'll be just like any of our other crews. They can go anywhere in the state, but home will be just down the road.
Very good. Question. Were they, of these fifteen hundred positions, what's the mix? Will they all be firefighter ones or will they be ones, twos, engineers and?
It's such a huge mix. There's um our, the administrative side of our house. Um non-uniform positions have kind of gotten left behind and so over the years, we keep adding all these safety personnel. But not the support personnel to, you know, the PAM and keeping fed and all that kind of stuff. So there's a big chunk of that. It's also bringing um. The station folks up to um that three point one one staffing model. So we're going to be that across the board. So a lot of uh the. State mission engine folks, a lot of the crew folks, extra battalion chiefs, assistant chiefs. So there's, it's across the board, kind of trying to right-size.
So when you say fifteen hundred positions, do you mean fifteen hundred uniformed positions?
No, the uniform positions, it's probably, I I couldn't give you an accurate number. It would be a, it would be a total.
Now we can put in the technical staff.
Yeah, the lion, the lion's share of it is uniform folks, but there's also that, I'd say maybe two thirds. I'm probably wrong. Um but there is a solid at least third of the probably the district staff.
It was, is this camp uh operational today?
No.
Was it in the CZU fire?
No.
Was it in the region? Was it in the area?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will it be?
What was the question?
The question was, is it a currently operational camp and is it located? I just thought I heard from the name of the. Location that it was part of the area that was burned during the CZU fires, but apparently not. So will this be an economic advantage to this community that it's going into?
Well, I think you could always argue that there's going to be employment positions in that community, right, that are non-firefighter, both firefighter and not firefighter. So theoretically, yes, it is an old county facility that the state will be renting from the county.
In perpetuity. So this is like a permanent new thing.
At least for the, at least for the foreseeable, I'd give it at least ten to fifteen years and then see what happens.
California.
There you go. Well, so the last question I have, I'm so sorry, I know I strike teams. There is a lot of uh discussion about the various fire companies around the Bay Area that are sending strike teams.
Yep.
Um are we involved in that effort?
So we are on the county fire side. We did not send one from the coast. Um. You know, remember, strike teams are at the discretion of the agency, send them, mutual aid is if available, not must, it's not automatic aid. Uh we, with vacations and current assignments, we deemed that we couldn't support sending an agent from the coast right now. We did not want to leave ourselves short here to send an agent out.
Did our rice strike teams come back for us?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anything else? Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you for sitting through the the whole program.
No, I was really.